Okay, sorry, there we had a technical problem.
It's a thermostat for everyone, I guess.
Yeah, sorry, we put everybody on mute, including ourselves. So let me restart. Good morning, everyone.
And rephrase everything.
And rephrase everything. This is the first town hall meeting, so also the first time that we are testing a few things, which explains our challenges here. Now that you can hear me, we have put all the participants on mute just to make sure that there is an efficient communication possible with now 200 participants, otherwise it would become difficult, which also brings me to the next point. We have a limit here this morning of 200 participants and knowing that we invited around 320 people, some people will have problems of getting in to the meeting now. We will try to solve this and we are recording this session to make sure that at least everyone can at least have this information. This session is mostly set up to address a lot of the questions that we have received from the different countries. Our board members will address the majority of these questions in this next hour. We will start off with an introduction from Patrick, sitting here to my left. I think you will see that on the camera on my left. And then we will take it from there. So Patrick, maybe if you can give us a brief introduction.
Yes, thank you all for joining. Again, it's pity that technically we were not aware of this, only 200 people could join, so we'll try to solve this in a later session. We'll have a later session anyway today with the northern part of Europe. And I think we'll have a third session for all the people who were left out. Thank you for joining. From where I'm sitting, I see a lot of different thumbnails with a lot of different interiors. Some of you smoking, none of you drinking yet, I think. And surprising, I think a million Zoom meetings over the last weeks. It's the first time that I don't see any tropical island background. So I think you all deem that to be well appropriate for this setting. Appreciate that and compliments for your interiors. The purpose of the meeting is to give you an update on the current situation that the company and its business is in, to give you a flavor of what's happening company-wide and to answer, as I also said, as many questions as possible. And again, thank you so much for submitting your questions, which was a little bit a last minute. The team over here spent a lot of time to filter these questions. You can imagine that a lot of questions were in the same, let's say, range of interest. And as said, together with my colleagues Rudiger and Stephen, we'll try to address as many questions as possible. If not today, I'm sure we'll find an occasion in the coming days to answer your questions. And as things will proceed, let's say, the coming weeks, a little bit looking into crystal ball, no one knows what will happen, let's say, with the virus and the environment we're in in the coming weeks, but I'm sure new questions might arise in the coming weeks. And we're more than happy to, don't misunderstand me, we're happy to, as I said, address those questions later on and have a follow-up of this town hall session to be scheduled, maybe at the end of the month, maybe in May, as things will proceed. A brief update on staff, I think the most important thing to mention is that as far as our information goes, all of us in the Multifamily, let's say, staff is healthy. A few of us have been tested, I always have to think it's negative or positive, it's always the other way around, but anyway, healthy. However, for quite a few, especially in our Italian team, they even lost friends and family members due to the coronavirus. Our thoughts are with you, with your families, and please know that Multy is there to help you if needed. Please reach out to us if you feel there is a need for us to step in from the head office or from your local office at a certain moment. We are a bigger family, and especially in these times, I think we should stay strong and hold hands where possible. Again, our sympathy goes out to these people and I truly hope, it goes without saying that we all hope, that the effects of the Corona crisis will be limited, will stay limited. Please stay safe, do whatever you need to do to stay safe. Health and family is more important than work, that's clear, although we will discuss this hour a lot about work probably. It's, I think, very important to know that if you have any doubts, give priority to your family and to your own health, that's clear. On a positive note, today, the 8th of April, a few of our colleagues are celebrating, probably in a very strange circumstances, are celebrating their holidays. That's Gianluca Rubago from Moimi. I'm not sure if I could identify you in the 200 thumbnails.
We have like 11 pages of thumbnails.
Anne Marie from Sendinoch, Lucien Smits from Turkey, from the Hague, but from Turkey, Bethul from Turkey and from Turkey, and Jessica Guerriero from Moimi. Happy birthday to you, raise a glass of wine on your health. We will do probably later today, I'm not sure if it's a Wednesday or Thursday. It's a Wednesday, so we can do this. Again, everyone is healthy, fortunately, on your health, a drink later on. These are difficult days for all of us privately, no one has ever been in a situation like this, kids being at home, your parents probably not being, difficult to visit them or not allowed to visit them. Anyway, at home with family, difficult setting for all of us in certain times, but that also goes for business life. I think no one ever experienced something that we are experiencing now, not only in our company, but in any other company in the business environment, but in certain times in a way. We want to thank you for your flexibility that you showed over the last weeks and we hope that you're able to show this flexibility over the coming weeks as well. Working from home with Zoom, with video conferencing, not having the possibility to have small chit chats with your colleagues, is asking a lot of extra effort. Please rather over-communicate than under-communicate. So a lot of people are, myself included, complaining about agendas being filled with endless calls and Zoom meetings and everything. This serves a purpose, that's at least my view. You rather over-communicate than under-communicate, a lot of communication that in the past you did, let's say, in the corridors of the office. Nowadays, you need to set up a call for this. It's needed, it works. So far, what we can see, the company is still in good shape, functioning, let's say, as a machine, thanks to your efforts, thanks to your flexibility, your discipline, your hard work, and in the end, the great team spirit that you're all showing on behalf of the board, but also on behalf of the shareholder Blackstone. We'd like to thank you for this. Where I'm mentioning the shareholder Blackstone, of course, that's not the only client we're serving here, we're also serving a lot of other international investors. Rudiger, no doubt, will touch upon this. These investors we're in touch with on a basically daily basis and they show their happiness with how our teams are functioning. Meanwhile, I get an update where so far we had 200 people on the call, we are now with 290 people. We tried to identify the 10 people who are not in and will give them a specific address. As I think I will mention in the beginning, this whole session is recorded anyway and will be later on available, I guess, for all of us to read, to reread or to revisit. Then I think this is the moment to hand over to Rudiger. I will come back to you at the end of this session. I think we're limited to an hour, but if needed, we can take the extra 50 minutes. I think that we lost in the beginning. And again, feel free, if I don't know if you have the chat option working, feel free to address your questions that you couldn't address in this session, please address it later on. And as said, we'll come back with a similar session, town hall session, probably in a month or in a few weeks from now, if needed. Okay, thank you. And I hope Rudiger, who is physically in the southern part of Europe.
I see him on my screen, so I'm going to ask Rudiger to already unmute. Rudiger will be giving us an update and to capture all of the questions that we have received in the operational area, whether this is an update on what's happening in the countries operationally, the lockdown, what has Multy been doing with our property management teams. A lot of questions have been received in this area and Rudiger will be addressing those. And there will also be a bit of additional attention to the area of solidarity. We have a lot of colleagues that already proactively have gone out and said, in our catchment area, there are people in need, there are people who can use help, what can Multy do to contribute? This is another area where Rudiger will give a bit more flavor. So Rudiger, I think you are all set, so the floor is yours.
First of all, hello, everybody. Good to see you all. This really feels good. And as Patrick said, also from my side, a big thank you for all the efforts made over the last almost three weeks now. We have been seeing that this virus has been, let's say, kind of a wave going through Europe and it all started, as we know, in Italy. So I have special greetings, of course, to our colleagues in Italy, which are already suffering now from this for three weeks, being in a lockdown, in a super lockdown, I would call it, for the last three weeks. And I think we all see what is going on, especially in the countries that are, let's say, hit most in Europe, which is Italy and Spain, where we see that the situation is slightly getting a bit better now in Italy, as it looks, but in Spain, actually, the numbers are again quite difficult. So I think it will stay there for a while. We've seen this sweeping, as I said, through Europe. And actually, it was quite, let's say, a positive momentum that we, when we started, when this all started in Italy and the Italian team had to face the consequences the earliest, that actually we had a learning out of Italy and the management team that could then actually apply this to all the other countries. So we would say thank you again to the, especially the Italian team, who has been facing this situation very early and then actually went through all Europe. You saw then what happened, Europe was not very much united, each country was running more or less his own agenda. And that, of course, puts a little bit difficulties on us, so each country has different reactions to the virus, so the lockdown in the countries is different. As you can see, a very harsh lockdown, I would say, in Italy and in Spain, but more open, let's say, the Dutch government is choosing a different route. You would see the same as well in Germany. And also, the timing was very different. So actually, looking at our colleagues in Blenshtown in Ireland, where they just had a lockdown since one week, so it's a timing difference and also the reactions in the markets were very different. But in total now, after more than, let's say, almost four weeks now, we see the situation is, let's say, very similar now in most of the countries, or more or less, all our shopping centers are not closed, they are open to public. And I think that it's very important that we need to understand that we serve the public here with keeping our assets open, even though most of our retailers have closed their stores, also in countries like Turkey, where there is not, let's say, a governmental regulation to close stores, but obviously, our customers, they are afraid to come to shopping centers and therefore, of course, also in a country like Turkey, where we operate most of our, most assets in one country, 14 assets, actually, we have, let's say, only 4% more or less or 5% of our stores open. So, and that, of course, has a very harsh impact on our business. I think everybody understands that a retailer that cannot make turnovers is not really happy to pay rents. And this, of course, leaves us with the fact that our collection rate, very likely, now starting with April, will tremendously drop. Investors are not, let's say, collecting their rents anymore and this obviously has a deep impact on our business. The good news about this is that, if there is any good news, but the good news is, I think that especially you all have been working hard to cope with this situation and that we were able to very swiftly and quickly react to this. We have been very transparent and very helpful to our investors, the forefront, of course, Blackstone, but not only Blackstone, we're operating in total with 16 other international players. And I can tell you that the feedback we get, and we are really in daily talks with our investors, the feedback we get is that Multy team is doing an extraordinary good job. We, I can quote investors that say, we, out of everything we're dealing with, Multy is the most transparent and what I really like is the most proactive manager in this situation, giving us the right recommendations and very helpful, of course, on executing them as well. So we have a very positive feedback from the investors and that is due to the fact that I think that we early enough started to prepare ourselves with our crisis management teams in the countries and in the headquarters, who have been working hard on this. But it goes actually through all the company. I have been in all the calls with, we had a couple of calls now with all the leasing managers, we see this in finance, we see this in every part of our business, that you are committed, that you are switched on, that we are not giving up, that we cope with the situation. And that is what, at least, we can see from a board level, that our investors are really pleased until now with the performance in this extremely difficult times. So maybe that's as a quick summary from the operational part. Let me address that a lot of us, of course, that work, let's say, in an office environment, are now sitting at home, but some of us in the countries are still, let's say, a very, very small amount of colleagues, but are still going to the offices in order to keep the offices at least a little bit operating. And then, of course, we have all our colleagues, special greetings to all our center management teams, we're running the shopping centers now, of course, in a different way, we have very little teams that, but still show up in our assets in order to keep them operating. You know that in all of the countries, actually, we are still operating, obviously, our hypermarkets, supermarkets, our pharmacies, our banks, it differs a little bit from country to country. In some assets, like in Poland, I think we have in Gdansk now, around 12 stores or what opened, a little bit more. In other countries, we have only two stores open, but that still means we need to take care of the assets, we need to clean them, we need to safeguard them, we need to make sure that customers are not waiting too long in line in front of supermarkets. So there is still a lot to do and I think we also are really thankful for the operational teams on the ground that, you know, have to or are still going to their shopping centers. And of course, it's a little bit more risky job than maybe like me sitting here at home. So that's highly appreciated also from the board's side. So Raul, I hand back to you, so if there are special questions on the business and how we are operating, then you can hand over some more questions, maybe.
Yes, thank you, Rudiger. We did have a lot of questions, Rudiger, in the area of leasing and discounts and operational questions with regard to how do we allow tenants to go back into their store to arrange things. In this session, we will not be able to address all of these questions, but at the end of the session, I will give a few more hints on resources and also on platforms like the country CMTs, where more of these rather detailed questions can be answered. Depending on the amount of time we have left at the end of this session, we will try to take a few of those on. I think for now, I would like to move over to our CFO, to Stephen, who I will already ask to unmute himself. Stephen will be addressing some of the questions that we have received about the overall financial health of the company and also how this crisis is impacting Multy in a way that people were asking questions about job certainty and prospects for the company. Stephen, could you elaborate a little bit on that broader theme?
Thank you very much, Raul. Thanks, everyone, for joining. As Patrick and Rudiger said, it hasn't been amazing to see, let's say, how switched on. Do you hear me, guys?
Yes, yes, we do. Go on.
It hasn't been amazing, let's say, to see how everyone has been switched on and be hands-on, let's say, to keep the ship sailing. As I said, a lot of investors highly appreciate these efforts, but also I want to pass on the appreciation and the full understanding of our shareholder. Last week, we had our quarterly update and they passed on a big thank you to all of you. They fully understand how difficult this is and they have a lot of appreciation how we deal with the situation. Now, we received a lot of questions from you guys regarding the future, regarding the financial healthiness of the company, what that means for you personally in the short term and in the long run. It's difficult to give you precise answers, but let me say this, Multy is a very healthy company. There is no immediate worry for you, your jobs, your salaries in the near future. We are very fortunate that we have a very strong shareholder. It's actually the biggest investor in real estate worldwide. Guys, can we go mute? Thank you. So I said, it is a very strong, healthy shareholder. There are no plans for any redundancies, layoffs whatsoever in the new future. A good saying is, and especially in private equity, is never waste a good crisis. There will be new opportunities for our business. I think it's in the best interest of Blackstone that we are well positioned to benefit to the max if these new opportunities will arise. But there are no guarantees in life, I have to be honest as well. We don't know, let's say, what will happen with our third-party business in the longer term, as well as the Blackstone business. So for now, no worries. Luckily, Multy is very cash-rich, we can sail this ship through this crisis in the short term, as I said. So I hope that I will be able to take away these worries for now. What we should do as a team, as the Multifamily, is to do the job we are assigned to do the best way we can, as difficult as it is sometimes, but that's the only thing what we can do and that is, in the end, the best assurance for us all, that we survive this crisis. So again, thank you very much, as I said, Rudiger as well, especially for the people on the ground who are facing the danger actually the most. Thank you and yeah, let's stay in touch. If you have any specific questions on this, you can, I think, via Raul, ask these questions now or we can address them at a later stage. Back to you.
Thank you, Stephen. We do have some more questions that we have been saving for the end of this session and maybe one of the common themes for which I would like to ask Rudiger was a lot of questions in the leasing area to say, what is Multy or actually, what is the landlord doing for the tenants? What is the rent relief or tenant relief strategy? Is there something that we can say on a general level about this, Rudiger?
Yeah, sure. Well, first of all, I think we need to understand, obviously, that it is the situation, especially also legal or tax situations within the countries are very different. Let me mention maybe two countries which have, where we have seen a big effect because the governments have been, actually, if I may say that, interfering into our contractual rights and obligations with our tenants, with the retailers. When you look at Poland, for example, or at a country like Ukraine, where the government in a very short notice, let me say overnight, on a weekend more or less, have simply decided to put it short, that there is no rental payment due during the period of the pandemic. So that, of course, is a governmental decision, we have to follow it and then, and that's actually it. So, but then, of course, we have countries where, let's say, the position of the landlord legally is much stronger and where they could enforce payments. But at the same time, of course, the likelihood that a tenant will pay when there is no turnover and believe me, the rent is for a tenant, obviously, a cost factor, an important cost factor, but it's not the most important one. So your staff costs and your purchasing, that is for most retailers, obviously, their biggest worries at this very moment. So, but to give you a guidance, so we, and a lot of you have been working hard on this over the last two weeks, we have per country defined based on that current situation there legally and tax-wise and what the rest of the market is. Also, very important to see what, of course, our peers are doing in the markets. So we have gathered all this information and we gave a clear recommendation to our investors on how they should deal now instantly with the situation. And the general rule is, and that's where we got an approval actually by our shareholder, by Blackstone yesterday, and the general rule throughout the countries is that we have now the possibility to defer the rents for April for another six months, so meaning tenants do not have to pay the April rent, as an example, they can pay this rent in six months' time. So we are helping our tenants and I think this is important as a message as well. We want to help our tenants and the investors want to help tenants with deferring the rents in some countries, looking at Turkey now, it could, it will most likely also be a write-off even of half of March and April. This is not set down yet because obviously, it's the investors and also, of course, financing banks have to give their approval, that's what we're currently working on, but we are very hopeful that within this week, that we will be able to inform the absolute majority of our retailers on what the invoicing will be about. And in most countries and in most asset, it means for those stores that are closed, that their rent will be, the payment will be postponed to a later moment, where hopefully we got out of this crisis, shops are open again and retailers having turnovers in order to be able to fulfill their obligations. At the same time, I have to say, obviously, that when you look at the turnovers of currently of our hypermarkets, supermarkets, of course, as they are still open, some of them have extraordinary good turnover. So that means that those tenants that are operating in our shopping centers will be charged with their normal rent and also with their common area charges, so with their service charges. For those tenants who are not operating or cannot operate, it's actually, as I said, a deferral of the rent of April and also a deferral of the prepayment of the service charges, 50%. So I think this is really a gesture that we give now into the markets and as one of the big players, I think in some of the markets, we are also setting a little bit the tone, that's also to be understood. And when we look at the other investors, not Blackstone, but the other ones we're dealing with, like Union, like Commerzial, like Deutsche Bank, of course, they name it, actually, most of those investors are following this advice that we give, but obviously, it's within their last decision-making. So, but I think we made a big, big step forward and I hope that we will be able to execute this now within this week. As said, it's not all written down on paper yet, but this is going to happen this week and our tenants will have a relief here. And of course, what is the purpose of this? and our tenants will have a relief here. And of course, what is the purpose of this? There will be a tomorrow and we need to make sure that we keep the occupancy, that we keep our assets as interesting and in the market as possible. And we need to make sure that our tenants are surviving together with us and that we keep most of them operating in our shopping centers after the crisis. Obviously, it will not be so easy to replace tenants, to bring new tenants in, that's also clear. And I think we all do understand and we see this out of the examples in Asia, that as soon as we go back, try to go back to normal, this will not happen from one day of the other. I think customer behaviors will be very different and also governmental regulations will not be lifted all at once. So that means, and then looking into the experiences of colleagues from Asia, turnovers are approximately in the beginning between 30 or 50% of what they have been before. So it will take a while, for sure, until we are back to normal. And we have to make sure that when this comes in place, that we are prepared, that we are prepared with you, with our teams to steer through this. This includes everything. This includes, for example, now, marketing. We have asked our own marketing teams to come up with ideas, okay? At the moment where we have a lifting of restrictions, how do we actually communicate this to our customers? And what is the right strategy here? So I think we are already a little bit now moving into this direction of thinking of, okay, what is our view on reopening? This is already part of our thinking.
Answers your question, Raul.
Yes, thank you. On that last point, on the reopening, we actually had a lot of questions on what is next, what will happen. And as Rudiger said, we don't know exactly when we can reopen more stores in our assets or when we would be reopening in a broader sense our office locations. But what we do know is that gradually, government restrictions will be lifted over the coming months. And we do know that we should plan for this. And that's what Rudiger also was hinting at. We are making those plans. What is also clear is that this will be a very gradual process where we need to look at the way that we work, both in the centers and in the offices, and that we have to see if in this new way of working, we can maintain a level of social distance so that over the coming periods, we allow people to come back and at the same time, keep respect for the social distancing practices that will be needed in the future, also after the lifting of the state of emergency that we see. A different category of questions, Rudiger, that would be good to address as well, perhaps in a bit more detail. We've had a lot of questions on what is Multy doing in a sense to contribute inside their catchment area to the ones that are in need or, for example, to a lot of the people that are working in the frontline. Would it be possible to address that a little bit?
Yeah, I think we were quite quick reacting on this one. I remember a call that we had, I think, almost two weeks ago where we had, especially a center management and marketing in that call. And the purpose of the call was that we said, okay, maybe our shopping centers are more or less closed now. A lot of stores not operating, but we have been profiting over years and years and years from people living in our catchment areas. And now we see that, especially in countries like in Italy or in Spain, but also in other countries, that, of course, a lot of families are suffering from the situation. We see that hospitals were just flooded with patients. So we had the idea immediately of, okay, what can we as Multy, what can we do in order to support, actually, those people that live in the catchment area of our shopping centers? And in this call, and I think we had more than 80 people of you in this call, we said, okay, let's come up with ideas and let's share ideas on where we can help. And this is not about selling the asset. This is not really about marketing the asset. This is really just, I think, we should all think about how can we contribute positively in order, let me call it this way, to ease the pain. And that was absolutely extraordinary. And a big thank you to everybody who has been working on this in the countries because the feedback we got, the list of ideas on especially helping hospitals, supporting hospitals, let's say, with food as an example. But, for example, I remember in Gdansk, it was a brilliant idea. We are very close to a hospital and, of course, our car park is closed, so we opened the car park because they had always difficulties with parking for their staff, just as a simple example, yeah? But also, how can we help elderly people that are alone at home and entertain them or help them with providing, bringing food? So there have been a lot of ideas on how we can support our, have support within our catchment areas and from more or less all of the assets. And we have been sharing this and this gets executed now. So I think that should be also part of, let's say, our thinking to make sure that we are, of course, we are here to make money with our shopping centers and for investors. But I think in a situation like this, to show our solidarity to the people that we're dealing with on a daily basis in our shopping centers is very important. At least, it's very important to us. And I think as soon as we have, let's say, the first results in the near future, we can share these experiences that we make with the whole group.
Very good. Thank you, Rudiger. I think we have managed to cover a lot of the main themes of questions that were addressed. At the same time, it's clear that we were not able to address all of the questions individually. We will, as a group, on our internet, I think most of you are familiar with our internet, we will be opening later in the week a frequently asked questions page dedicated to the Corona outbreak. There will be various categories of questions already addressed there. Think about the scenarios that we have prepared for the center managers in case one of the store staff members is infected. There is a script for that. Many of you know that it is available, but we're also now repeating this on this frequently asked questions page just to make sure that everyone that is looking for answers has a place to go as a first stop. It's also clear that this is only a first stop. More questions could appear, also more urgent ones. And in that sense, we really want to stress that in each country, there is a country crisis management team. This crisis management team should be your resource in case you have more urgent needs, in case questions that are still not answered get raised. Patrick, in his introduction, already mentioned the group crisis management team and you see some of the members here, is in almost daily contact with those country crisis management teams. So it's actually a quite simple structure to make sure that if there are any urgent issues, that they receive timely attention and get resolved in a proper way. So that's with regard to questions. We also, Patrick mentioned, will be planning a repeat of this session in a couple of weeks, probably toward the end of April. We do expect that by then, the outbreak situation will have evolved and also our response and our actions will already have evolved. So I think there will be enough to discuss at that point. Should you have questions, we will, of course, again, open the floor to collect those questions and then see that we address those ones as well. To conclude this session, I will pass the metaphorical microphone again to Patrick to wrap up and to thank you.
Okay, no, there's, I think, little to add to what you said already. I'm very, in a way, happy that we managed to stay way within time. That doesn't mean that we didn't have a meeting that made a lot of sense. I think, as I said, the coming days, we will, let's say, look at questions that no doubt will come in and try to address that either in a one-on-one with either of you if needed or in the next town hall session. This was in a way technically also a tryout. It's not easy to get 300 people in the same, let's say, in the same channel and make this a worldwide, worldwide fight, worldwide, sorry, two-way communication channel. I hope it brought you a bit of what you expected. As I said, we trust that we will master this crisis as far as we can together as a Multifamily, although we're all widespread and all in different functions and different locations all over Europe. At least, we share a few things and it's not just a multi logo on your business card. But also, please know that your colleagues are there. It's part of your life. Your colleagues are there to help you and that extends to your colleagues in other countries, but also to your colleagues here in Amsterdam. As I said, if there's a need for us to help you in a way where we can, let's say, practically help you, whatever that is, where approachable, doesn't mean that we will take over your mortgage, let's say, but we will be there to help you if needed with the practical things. We all need to be flexible. As I said, your dedication and your flexibility over the last weeks and hopefully over the coming weeks as well is remarkable. And we're truly not only impressed, we knew we had good people, but this is, this is again underlining how good you all are. But we're also impressed that it all worked out. This is the multicultural that we try to keep strong, that we, no doubt, this crisis will, let's be positive, this crisis will bring something good, a change of many things. But for sure, what is, and that's my own view here, what it brought already is knowing that we have a very well-oiled, very well-functioning machine. And even in the most extreme circumstances that we're facing now, we all together with all our individual efforts have been able to keep the machine running. And that's remarkable. I mean, nothing got lost, let's say, in action. Okay, we have issues with invoicing, there might be issues with reporting here and there, but all in all, the ship is sailing and that's remarkable. It's not something that we were aware of every day, let's say. But all of a sudden, in these extraordinary circumstances, this becomes clear. And I hope that also gives all of you the reassurance that it makes a lot of sense to be part of this club. And as Rudiger and Steven mentioned, Blackstone is aware of this as well. Blackstone is also aware of that they are asking us a tremendous effort in making a zillion different scenarios. And the whole organization is working on those scenarios. Sometimes you might think it doesn't make sense at all because I worked on scenario 55 Roman 3A and I don't hear anything back. It all makes sense. All these are stones that build a story for not only our shareholder, Blackstone, but also for the other investors. And as Rudiger mentioned, if we get out of this crisis as a more, as a machine that kept on functioning and even improved functioning during these circumstances, that will definitely, in a post-crisis business environment, will be of our benefit, not only on a personal, let's say, work level, but also our competitive edge in the market will improve. A post-crisis market, no doubt, will be a shakeup, as any crisis does. But after, let's say, in this shakeup, only the best will survive. And I think we take pride in, it might be too early, let's say, to raise a flag here, but we, I think, can take pride of being the best in our market. And that's highly appreciated. Leaves me with wishing you an enjoyable Easter weekend. I know not all of our Turkish friends are celebrating Easter, but well, take the opportunity to enjoy it, at least as we do in the rest of Europe. And please stay safe, stay healthy. And as I said, your personal health and the health and happiness of your family is the most important. Focus on that while you're doing your Zoom calls, doing your, let's say, emails with children running around you with shopping to do, with people ringing the doorbell and all the other things that distract you. Keep on focusing on your own health and that of your family. We hope to see all of you back, let's say, within a few weeks in the same good shape, maybe even better shape. Thank you to Raul to moderate, to a whole team of colleagues, Barbara, Frank Gerhards and Gerdin on the, behind the screens, trying to organize everything, thanks to IT to make it work. We were doubtful if it did work, it would work, but it did. And again, happy Easter and stay safe. Thank you all.
Thank you.